Meeting at 6:30.
Two.
Two. And just a note that this is being, I don't know, recorded, filmed, whatever it is they do with it, broadcast on local cable and, as I said before, on YouTube, the world over. So, take a look at minutes of September 10.
First time you looked to see if I got a spot out here.
Thank you for coming.
When you get done, I've got something on page two I want to...
Tim?
Sorry, my excuse. We're on video again.
To the rest of the year, from what I've been told.
Interesting. It's live, not memorized. He said he has something on page two. Yeah, where I said inquiries about the large amount of fill being used in Phase Two, to which Cleese replied. But one thing that I wanted to say about that fill, and I wish I, I don't know if I said it, I probably didn't, but I don't know if I could have it put in there. The dirt that's being used in that fill has mulch. You know, it's mixed with mulch. All the grindings that they had there. Do we know what the percentage is that can happen like that? I mean, you're not supposed to bury stumps. But are you supposed to grind that stump up and put it in as fill? No.
No.
Is there a certain percentage? And that's what's affecting my thinking.
Well...
Quinn's gonna probably be the best one to...
I guess, once again, I think we have to look at what is our jurisdiction. If that fill is going under the roadway, that's one thing. If it's just going onto the lots, that's different.
It's to build up the lots for the foundation. Let me guess, that's to build the inspector.
That would be my take on that. And, you know, I...
See, being a subdivision, I thought it would fall under us also.
I don't really think so.
Fill would not fall under us.
Not on the lots themselves.
On the road it would.
On the road.
Maybe earthworks as well, though.
No, not now. This is way before earthworks, is what I'm thinking.
I don't know, I should talk with Will again.
All right.
Because, I don't know, I have been under the impression in a way it doesn't really make sense, at least for what I have seen going on. I was under the impression that the footings for a foundation is supposed to be put on virgin ground.
Yes, I thought so too. And it used to years ago, unless something has changed.
Well, that's what I'm kind of wondering because, hey, you know, I'm not a building inspector. But I've certainly watched an awful lot of foundations going in right around my home, but...
I've dug mine out.
There's no...
They're not placing those footing forms necessarily on virgin ground. I don't know if there is adequate substitutes for that.
Well, that's something I think we should find out in... And I don't know if we can...
I can check with Will.
If you could.
Yeah.
And just...
There's gotta be a spec...
Informed, I want to be informed about it or the rest of the board should be informed about it and so they're keeping it in the back of their mind. I'm just going back to Orchard Hill and, like I said, I remember Senior, Cleese Senior, putting three foundations on top of one another to do that. Because of the cul-de-sac that was on the, on the, up in the air, that much. So, okay.
Like I say, I just...
But I don't know if that, I should have that in there or not? If it could be added? Or should we just let it be as so stated?
I'll check with him.
Okay.
I'll find out whenever I can.
All right.
Guarantee you a satisfactory answer to that.
Probably not, but that's okay. At least I want it out in the open. Move as written.
Second tip.
Any discussion?
Any favor?
Aye.
Okay. Onward, we have a couple of A and Rs. One on, I believe, Turkey Hill Road.
I'm Beth Nelsons-Cockins, is one of his daughters.
And we think is, I'm seeing, what I think is a Mylar here, but no paper copies.
The board has the various paper copies, I'm gonna watch that.
Is it the one that was on the computer?
Yeah, I sent both of them out electronically, but I also have the paper backups for both of the A and Rs.
May I ask, isn't the frontage 250 foot?
It would be 200 in the R60.
Pardon?
200 feet in the R60 zone.
200 feet? Is there any way that, from now on, when we have something like this brought before us? Have the zoning map on there, a picture of it? I got a better, let's bring it up on the TV.
Well...
Bring it up on the...
No, I got, I got some, when we get to that, I got some resolution from, maybe David does too.
All right, so this is in the R. I tried to see if I had it, but I didn't have it here.
The answer is for us to have really access to a zoning map.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think we could require a zoning map.
I don't think so, but...
Number one, these are black and white.
I know, but still.
Yeah, it does, it does state the zoning district.
Yeah, it's got the zoning district in there, so...
R60, it says.
So it's acre and a half and 200 feet of frontage.
R60 in...
I guess...
Not... It should, R60 in what zone though?
Residential.
R60 is a residential 60 zoning district.
Yeah. So what's the one outside of the sewer line sewer thing? It's R60 also?
It's through the R60s.
Yeah, 'cause R40's just in the air.
R40, R60 has nothing to do with sewer.
Well then, how come we only have 200? Is it 200 feet of frontage?
In R60.
And 150 in...
Excuse me, okay.
In the, in the R40.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
I guess just, not for this particular A and R, but for future use. One of the things that, I know at least for a while, we were making certain, we checked that the frontage was on a...
Certified? Correct.
We have not really been doing that. And it states it's a public...
Emerald?
It's Turkey Hill.
No, Turkey Hill.
Which I believe is a public ground.
Yes.
Variable with pay, that's...
I'm saying, in the future, if we... I don't think you even have to go to the town clerk.
Yes.
Well, to Dick's point, we would be able to check that if we had a... Is that good?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, does anybody have any concerns? I'm seeing the 233 feet of frontage and 2.5 acres more acres.
And I see it's got electrical easement, so it has no barons on it. Move to endorse.
Second tip.
Is there any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have also the Form A and the fee?
The Form As here, the fee is $400.
One.
That seems...
350.
I thought it was lots altered or created, so we're altering the big lot, the main lot.
Okay, you're right, you're right.
And they created one, but they're all altering the big one.
Oh, okay.
It's fine, yeah, it's fine.
Okay, okay. Did I hear an I for all the favor?
Yes.
It's where, only three quarters here.
What was the check number?
It's on your A and R sheet, a check 547.
The folding's easy, I'm done.
Yeah.
The upper, right in the corner.
Check four, 547?
That's the number.
Yeah, and then $400. All right. There's that.
Need five copies?
Probably not, we need one for the file. I'll take two for the file.
File, go ahead, Scott Penn, that's her.
Better turn this off, this is crazy.
Can get it, but...
Okay, and our, same, you can do the others, you'll have a super special stamp down there.
Yeah, I can do that.
Have Mrs. Calkins put her G H on there with an explanation of what it means.
All right, let me, gotta find your open spread. There we go. Good. Okay. Sign, seal, and deliver here. You'll return this in 30 days.
Okay.
Just need you to sign that and then we can...
I thought that I got the Mylar copy back.
You will, I just need you to sign that.
Oh, okay, so should I sign?
Where the, see what, turn it sideways, right where your finger was, the red, red portion right there, that's it.
I should sign my own name.
Correct.
Tim?
What you are saying there is that, once the Mylar has been recorded at the courthouse...
Yes.
And there's an official courthouse stamp on it, you'll get a copy of that official stamped plan and return it to us.
Okay.
Did I sign this yet?
All right, so you don't need any more of these, or you don't?
Do I get any of the paper ones back?
How many do we have?
It'll be five. Can I borrow this or borrow that? I wanna put these over so she doesn't...
Get smear?
Yeah, it doesn't smear.
I turned mine in.
She should really have one. If we absolutely have to, we move it to the fire station.
Uh, no, actually, the fire station only has legal. We gotta make them at our place. They're the only ones that are 11 by 17. Or do they have a...
They have a full side floor.
They do!
And a scanner too.
Scanner floor.
I'll be damned. They didn't tell me that, I asked for that.
We've known that for, I mean, we did it for a couple of years.
Oh, okay. Just need, anybody got a rubber band?
Rubber band?
Perfect.
So all the concrete paper copies you have will go to the various...
Yeah.
Works and so on, I need them. Thank you very much.
Take care.
So, they must have it tied, where the heck is it? 'Cause I...
It is, when you, when you... You know where the holding cell is?
Yeah.
It's right over by there.
Damn it, I went the other way. I went to the office and found that little printer that only does legal, doesn't do tabloid.
It's pretty big.
No goods.
Okay, we have another A and R. This is the Ceserco Blair Prescott Street, Maple Ave.
I was trying to figure this one out on the map.
And, I guess I, number one, do not see the applicant here.
No, deny it.
More on this particular copy, I see we're looking at. Oh.
I can quickly just fill it briefly. The applicant was in today. He put a note on to the plan relative to zoning compliance. They were not able to attend the meeting tonight. I do, I can explain this if you'd like. I think it's a really, an extension of a discussion from last time as to what they're trying to do here. If I could just take this plan. So the existing condition here is... Let me just get my prior plan that we were looking at from last time here. So under the existing condition, the applicant has an estate lot special permit, and that goes from here, down to here, and back to here. And that this is a separate parcel, also owned by the same applicant, Ceserco. This land, shown as parcel B and parcel C, and Lot 4 is owned by Blair. So the purpose of this A and R is to set the stage for a special permit for the estate lot to revise. The estate lot has previously granted to move it from 8.89 acres, which is the whole thing, to 5 acres. So what would happen after all permits have been granted is that parcel C would go with Lot 2, and that would be the estate lot. It would look like that. And that this Lot 3, parcel A and parcel B, would be combined to create a house lot for Ceserco. And the remaining land, Lot 4 and parcel D, would be for the open space design option subdivision that's under discussion. So this makes the estate lot work in terms of landmass, but it doesn't grant rights to the estate lot until a special permit has been obtained under a different proceeding.
That's what I was concerned about. Does this A and R supersede? That's what I'm worried about normally.
You know, in a, in a way, it kind of does. And that is why, Dave and I discussed, and we requested that they put this note on the bottom.
Oh, which we don't have, okay.
Okay, we do have, it's a...
No, I'm saying...
It's on the Mylars, but not on the paper.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is really where it matters, because this is the one that gets recorded the rightest.
In other words, it's saying that our endorsement of this plan does not mean that this plan meets zoning requirements.
Okay.
Which it doesn't until that new special permit for the estate lot is granted. They have also applied for that special permit for the new estate lot. And I don't, have we seen all the hearing yet?
That's, the hearing will be scheduled for the 22nd of October.
At least in my own mind, I don't really see any reasonable reason why we would not approve that special permit. Being the state lot, it will meet all the requirements of the state lot.
I'm fine with that.
So, while, yes, it's, to me, it is going a little bit backwards, I think we're protected.
Question.
I've learned nothing about having this microphone.
I'm sorry, I just needed the space. Talking counter space. Human space.
Throw it out the window, please.
Mute. Let's get a feedback on it.
Why, at the hearings? And I can't remember, it was one of the two gentlemen kept on telling me, we need to do this so that this land, abutting landowner has no legal right to go into their properties for access.
Think about the open space?
No, I'm talking about, I don't know, because it showed the right of way or something like that, you know, a road eventually was over here or someplace very close to this abutting property. And I think maybe they were afraid that abutting property wasn't wanting to attach to it. But didn't we ask one time about seeing the properties that were next to these things? To make sure that everything was in compliant? Is this landlocked in this piece of property?
What piece?
Mr. Dara.
This guy, the guy?
That's not part of this lot.
It's not part of this?
How do you know? Did not, did we not say that we wanted to have the abutting land showing up someplace so that you could see?
You mean a picture?
A picture or something, yeah.
I remember seeing, you saying something, you wanted an additional picture.
Norm thought it would be a good idea if we had...
And the thing is, I don't think we have formalized that.
No, we haven't, have we?
No.
Therefore, that's on the agenda to have, I would say, 1st of November. What things that we have changed, we'll have a public hearing and make it. If we've, you know, whatever stuff we've had. Because to me, for Grand Lawd...
You mean get it on the warrant for...
Not a warrant, no, no, this is strictly...
This will be strictly in the subdivision.
Subdivision. Oh, okay, okay, so this isn't zoning, this is just...
Right.
Subdivision, okay.
It's just, you know, requirements for an A and R plan. And once again, we'll tell you, we can keep Dave busy for the next three years here.
Yes.
Do think that we maybe need a little bit of research into, are there limits to what we can require on an A and R plot?
Well, sure, I mean, I'd be glad to have more of this discussion under item five, continue review of subdivision regulations, because this is where this all started.
Okay.
If the board wants to segment its review, perhaps A and R with some changes or leave the rest of it, that's the direction I'd be looking for. But that's not what we've had established up to this point.
I can't remember who we had this discussion of, it was before you or... But it came up before.
Yeah, I know, actually, no, it's fairly recent. And like I said, the biggest thing is that the A and R process is still written in state law. So there may very well be limitations as to what can be required on an A and R plan.
And then Norm, we've got that A and R guideline book from the state that we could use too to see if there's anything in there to assist us. Which I think we all need copies of, that's my opinion. I don't know how to get those.
It's something that still requires some discussion.
But still, I am bound to determine that it would be nice to have that there because it would be illegal for us to sign something and create a...
Landlocked piece of property.
That is correct.
I don't know about that.
I do, I think it's illegal to do that.
It's immoral, I'll give you that.
I don't know. I'd have to have a legal opinion on that one.
Yes.
The only question I've got on this A and R is all of this terminology above the...
You know, all this up here.
This can't, that can't be done until the special permit's granted, correct? That's what, I read all that and I'm like, hold it. If we sign this, does that sign off on all of this conveying and adding and combining up here before the special permit? I know what you got down here, I agree with that, but I'm just, I hate signing a document to my name when I see stuff up here that basically says I'm gonna do all this without a special permit being signed off on. I'm just asking.
This plan, at least as far as I'm concerned, when filed at the courthouse encompasses not just the drawing, but each one of these things as well.
If I could just add to this conversation somewhat, the applicant has requested that this be held until the 22nd of October.
Oh!
As well.
So we're not really signing it tonight, right?
Well, we kinda have to sign it.
Timeline.
Otherwise we're past the 21 days, right?
Correct, and then it will be constructively approved.
Now, I'm confused, why didn't they just... I'm a chess player. Why hold it to the 22nd and force us to sign it now? I'm confused.
Because he wouldn't then be able to, he wouldn't be able to register it until the special permit is granted. I think that's what they're looking at, yes. They, they wouldn't be able, if we hold the plan, if we hold the Mylar, sign it but hold the Mylar, then he will not be able to register this at the courthouse until the special permit is granted.
Well, he's asking to do that, right?
No, there's two, there's many, it's not, it's, let me just try to get to the bottom line on this.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for.
As you may recall, A and R must be approved within a certain period of time, otherwise it's constructively approved. 21 days to do so, we're right up against the clock. The applicant chose to submit the A and R before the special permit for the estate lot. Staff cannot refuse to accept an A and R plan. You will not have that jurisdiction. So now you have this before you. If this is not approved, it's constructively approved. If it is approved, the applicant cannot do any construction of the estate lot or recognize the estate lot has been reduced in size compared to the prior version until a special permit. All this is doing is creating, altering the lot configuration for the existing estate lot and the proposed new lot. It's not granting any rights under a special permit as it pertains to the estate lot. They're two separate actions, but both actions have to be done in order for this to...
I guess what I'm getting at, because I don't trust, excuse me, Dave, for interrupting, is I don't trust builders anymore in this town. So if we grant this permit, there's nothing stopping him from putting a house here, starting a subdivision here, and then putting in a special permit to us. I don't buy that till that special permit's approved. That's, that's my game, that I think, I mean, I'm just, I've seen what's done here and I'm getting tired of it, is what I'm getting tired of in this town. So if we grant this, based on this verbiage, we're giving them this whole piece of property, we're giving them this piece of land that's conveyed into C, so this will be one piece of land, and we're giving them this all, put together, available for a subdivision. Again, he can't do much, he's gotta come through us for the subdivision, I get that. But it doesn't stop him from going to Will and saying, I wanna build a house.
He can already do that under the existing configuration.
Yeah, but not with, not with B.
If he can't register this plan, he can't. If he can't register this plan, he can't.
Okay.
And if it's constructively approved?
Then he can.
Then he can.
All right.
It's kind of a screwy way of doing things.
Yeah, it's the faith thing, and I don't have the faith in what's happened in the past. Just call me not faithful, I just don't- Been shat it too many times lately. All right, that's enough for me.
Do I have a motion to endorse the plan but to hold it?
A motion to endorse the plan but to hold it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
But if we hold it, isn't it constructively approved, so?
No, it's not.
I'm confused.
If it gets signed, it gets approved, but the planning board, for what staff would take- have physical possession of this plan until the 22nd, this is the plan that has to go to the registry and deemed it to be recorded.
What legal rights do we have to hold this?
They have permission.
In writing?
That's all I'm getting at, I'm just- I'm saying if they come in, if Sisurko comes in and says, "Give me the plan", can we stop them? That's what I'm getting at, "I wanna go record this, thanks for signing it."
Well, you can say Marilyn's got it, and then I'll say, "Well, John's got it."
I get it, I just, again, I'm sorry for playing devil's advocate, I just don't- I don't have the trust anymore.
I understand what you're saying, for sure.
So it's supposed to hold this till October?
22nd.
22nd, I'm gonna give them the trust this time, one more time. Done, that's all I had for it.
Any further discussion? Okay, Wes?
Aye.
Aye.
I never knew how much that TV screen really meant to us.
Well, it's ours, I can tell you that.
I know, but still.
Half of it. Half of it's ours, yeah. It'll be put any place we want.
Uh, yeah, um, the fee is- We have the Form A, but you may wanna check the fee for this.
How many, geez, Norm?
Oh, I can figure this one out, $2,000.
Okay, so the whole fee was $700. What there is is a special permit on the state lot and the A and R.
Okay, the state lot fee is 300?
Five.
Five.
For a special permit?
So a whole check, we're gonna sign it?
Hasn't signed. Cause there's a lot of properties being-
That's not right.
That's not right.
We said that the day requested that we hold the plan?
Yes.
So we make sure that that's reflected in the end minutes?
Till October 22nd, correct?
It's on film. Would be nice to see where you're here to back it up, though, but-
Yeah, that's what I- Sean, it's- You can go through the microphones, I'm good.
I don't wanna smudge the-
I got it.
Are you getting feedback on this?
So did he give you a blank check, or he already gave you a check?
The applicant filed this with the town clerk.
Yeah.
Dropped off copies at the planning board office, this is what they supplied.
No check, but no check.
There's a check for number 4581.
Oh, for $700.
4581.
Yeah, 700.
$700. Okay.
Consider it all the last.
Earth bench right there.
I'll take a look at it.
Oh, Chen, there's one right there on your minutes.
Oh, got it, thanks, good. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, okay.
Fill us up those markers.
Oh.
Okay. Item agendas, hearings, none, subdivision development, none, other than I just got an email that apparently they are planning to start paving phase two of Rice Lemon on Wednesday.
And they did a little bit of the sidewalks.
They did bits and pieces of the sidewalks, I don't understand exactly what they did or didn't do. Or why.
Yeah. I took a ride through there Sunday, or I think it was Sunday.
Yeah.
And-
Just let me go through there, give me a call, I'll go with you. I haven't been down there in a while.
Yeah. All right.
Okay.
No sign of them working on, you know, getting across to the rail trail?
Not that I- not that I know.
No, I didn't see anything.
The thing is, it- to the best of my knowledge, right now, they have modified that access to the rail trail from the original plans.
Where?
Because the original plans were bringing it right across kind of the-
Yeah.
I don't know what you wanna call it, the damn dyke, whatever you call it, between the two.
There was no two originally, there was only one.
Okay.
And it went across where the damn part of it was.
And I believe they are now intending that the access is gonna go around the rim of that further detention pond.
Oh, boy.
And I don't believe we have a plan that shows that.
Only if MEPA agrees with it.
We'd have to take a look, we did receive a revised plan set. We can look at that together if you'd like to come up with-
So that's something else to know.
All of us, please.
We'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
You better believe it, yeah, because-
The comment was to the planning board chair to come up and look at it, to have a look at it in general. If you like, we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
I would.
We have one large set, we'll bring it in.
Yeah, cause I'm concerned if they've changed this, they've got a MEPA permit, do they have to go reapply for that?
Do they have other permits, do they have?
I just, it's a question. Cause this was a big hullabaloo with this whole, you know, we had the original plan, we changed the plan, we approved it. They had to go back to MEPA with that approval plan, so now we're changing the plan again, and this is not a- I know the question is, is this a major or is this a minor change? I don't know who defines that at MEPA.
Yeah.
Or any of the other permits, like you said, Dick.
I don't think they're causing any other construction in that area, I think they're just making use of what's already there.
Yes, but it's still, to me, it- the-
It's a change in the plan.
It's a change in the plan, and to me-
A rim of a-
The rim, going around the rim, before they went across just up and over, and that was it. Not around anything, not next to the- to anything, not next to the triple E breeding grounds, and-
Well, there's a- there's a safety issue there, Dick, if you're walking around a rim and it's wet grass, you slide down.
Yeah.
Potential, I'm not saying you would, but you could. But there's a safety issue walking around a rim of a sloped area.
How wide, you know, because the other one was, I believe, was like, the path had to be at least five foot wide, five or six foot wide. I can't remember exactly what it was on that thing.
I think the top of these rims is something like six to eight feet.
Okay.
Wide, but don't take my word for it.
And also, it's-
They gotta be paved?
No, it was crusher run.
So you've got a permeable- an impermeable surface next to an detention pond?
Right, so it rains, the water will go into the pond, and it'll probably wash on the end, but-
Yeah.
But now, is it that far along that this falls under the homeowner's agreement? Are they responsible for it, the homeowners?
For keeping, if it washes out, repairing it and all that?
Repairing it, yeah, from now on? Who's responsible for it? Who's responsible, you know, I mean, that's one of the reasons why they had a certain amount of money that was supposed to be put away, and then how's that account doing?
That's a good question, if the homeowners live there now, are they responsible for the upkeep of? Not, you know, there's not 40 or 60 of them there, there's just phase one and that's it. I'm not sure what that total is, 15 or-
Twenty-something?
My guess is that the developer maintains control over that until
Okay.
the subdivision is essentially complete.
Okay.
But we do need to check that plan.
Hmm.
Which, well, we still have the condition of getting occupancy permits on phase two until we're satisfied with that.
So he can do the roads, he can build the houses, but- and he can sell the houses, but nobody can get into them?
Yep.
Okay, I'm fine with that. As long as- and Will's aware of that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good.
Have we heard anything lately from Quinn Engineering?
Yeah, they didn't have any report this time. Cause there was a compaction report that was supposed to be-
Yeah.
Yeah, you wanted-
I think I did get a copy of a query about- No, that was- No, I don't think I've had anything actually from Quinn.
Hmm. I wanna stay on top of that, you know, before it puts down that coat.
Yeah. There was something, and again, it came, I believe. It was a reply to an email from Clee Blair to Yankee Testing. And it was, I believe, Blair's request for compaction testing, and Yankee Engineering, I believe, agreed that they would be there on Monday. Because paving is gonna begin on Wednesday.
Can we ask David, in business hours, to check with Quinn and see if they have the report and if there's any issues for the next meeting?
And is he gonna be there?
Yeah, I don't- if it, yeah.
Cause he, A, if he hasn't been there recently, would he be there when they start bringing in the-
I just wanna make sure they review the compaction reports, make sure those- make sure there's no issues. I don't want what happened over on Rock Hill Two.
Yes.
Having a brain death off of Palm Agassit Bear Hill. The, I think that was Lenny's before it became Clee's, in his section where it went
Yeah.
collapsed on itself. I don't remember the findings, but I remember talking to Gary, and it was basically below the asphalt level where the problem was.
Yes.
Okay, anything else on that? Okay, onward, to other. And we have Peter Crane here. Before, before anything, you seem to have somewhat recovered.
I think I'm not passing the plague on to others.
Oh, okay, I'm assuming bylaw did not meet.
Bylaw did not meet, at least not to my knowledge, there were so many people who said, "Nah, forget it" or couldn't show up.
Okay, just wanna be sure. Anyway, Mr. Crane is kinda proposing to- What do I wanna say?
Zoning bylaw format and changes?
Yeah, to make some format changes to the zoning bylaw, apparently to at least, number one, probably unify how all of the different bits and pieces of the zoning bylaw are put together. The zoning bylaw has been done in bits and pieces, bits and pieces. Okay, well, one group wrote this part, and Anita or whoever copied it and put it in. Then another group probably wrote another part, copied it, and they didn't necessarily use, let's say, the same format, the same symbols, and that sort of thing, I think I'm getting what you're trying to say.
That's exactly the right starting point.
And I tried to help her out about four years ago by taking that whole PDF and scanning it in, or that document, and then turning it into a Word document for her. I don't know what happened to that.
Well, we're using a Word document now.
Okay.
Recently, the most recent set of problems started with the License Marijuana Establishment bylaw.
Yeah, that's-
And it didn't integrate well, and so Anita publishes it as a separate document. And then we have the latest growth rate limitation bylaw, and she was trying to combine all this together, and everything was getting very messed up. And it all has to do with, as Norm says, different rules inside that document for publication for different pieces, and it just doesn't play together well. So she asked me to help her out, and let's start off by saying, we are not making any substantive changes to the bylaw that would require your approval, town meeting, select, everybody gets involved in that, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about publishing the document. Part of what that means, as Norm suggested, is that we're trying to unify the look of all the sections, so that everything's starting with, I believe, adult entertainment, since that point has not had the same continuous section numbering.
Or fonts, or anything like that.
The fonts are all different, the formats of headings and how they define what, it's all different. So we're looking at cleaning that up and making it look fairly unified. We're talking, so all of this is within the power of the town clerk. By law, she has the ability to change fonts, spacing to a degree. She can change the identity of numbered things, section numbers, subsections.
Just can't move the content.
You just can't change a misspelling or any punctuation. But you're allowed to fix obvious typos, which is a fascinating challenge. And I have found a couple, for example, in a couple places, I found capital I O T where a lot was clearly intended. And if you're just reading it quickly, it looks right, but- So little things like that we're talking about fixing. I've really come before you to ask for the- well, we've gone through the work of assigning section, continuous section number from beginning of document all the way to the end. We end at section 99 right now. But there are two problems that are causing other publication, or two things that are changing publication problems. One of those is these section 10A, 10B, 11A, 11B, 14A, 14B. Having a section with that identity makes the publishing difficult, only because the section numbers at the top of every page, I don't know how to put this other number that they wanna put up there. So where today, we say starts at section one, goes to, ends at section five, starts at section seven, continues to section eight. Those headers, I can't find a way to construct something that says, "Starts at 14, continues to 14A." I can't put 14A and B up there at all.
Even in the headings or the-
In the headings, in the page headings themselves.
Yeah.
They're in the body of the document, that's fine. So if you don't mind losing the section numbers on each page, that's an easy fix. Another possible fix is losing the A B designation. Making 10A, 11, 10B, 12, what was 12, 13, if my numbering in my head is correct right now. I don't know how important though these section number designations are to you, so I don't wanna just go off and make a wild suggestion, I'm just asking the kinds of things that you think would be worthwhile to help the publication process and to keep you guys as productive as you can be.
Do the chair, Norm, this is my opinion. I think the twelve A, twelve B should all stay because if that's on any document anywhere, it's gonna cause continuity problems. I don't have a problem getting rid of the headings as long as there's an index or a table of content at the beginning. I'm okay with that.
Now-
Because, go ahead.
I love Anita to death, but my goodness, she spends way too much time on sometimes the wrong things. She was manually constructing the table of contents. She was manually putting in every one of those page headers herself.
Word will do that for you.
It will, if you do it right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so I'm sort of feeding information to Anita and to Damian to try and take care of some of that, so they'll be able to take care of it from now on, but they need a good starting point.
They gotta have the heading called a heading, so it'll be pulled into the table of contents.
Yes, and it will be, that's all, that's all being straightened out, I need to do just a little more work and then I'll hand it back.
I'm okay with getting rid of that heading stuff to make it flow, just because I'm afraid we've got documents that might reference twelve A or twelve B on somewhere. And if we change it, we won't have continuity, we might find it later.
There would certainly need to be consistency across everything, and that would include not only this body, but the building inspector, all the inspectors, I expect, have some references to those sections somewhere, I don't know.
That's why I said, I don't have a problem getting rid of that top heading.
Could there also be within the document, a summary? That, you know, just a list, you know?
Yes.
Section fourteen A is now section fifteen. You know, section twenty-one B is now-
Oh, that's very easy to do, in fact, if you look at the very last section, the very last, I assume that the disposition list is in that, yes, right there. That's the set of edits that have been made, is already in the last page of the document. And making, I would suggest that we would put it, if we were to make changes like this, put it there. So we could say moved or renumbered these in this way or that way. Now, I can see why you wouldn't necessarily want to change it, there is another change that was suggested to me. So I just want to bring it up for discussion, and whatever you, whatever you folks want, that's what we're going to do, I'm here to help, I'm not trying to guide or push anything here. And that is that we lose consecutive section numbering across articles. That Article one would have section one through five, and Article two would have section one through seven, and whatever they are, I don't remember what the numbers are.
Personally, I think the way it's done now is stupid.
That's what I didn't hear.
Is stupid. Those section numbers just continue, continue, continuous.
Yeah.
That makes no sense to me. Each article starts with section one.
Right. Now, that is the way that we've done the general bylaws, that we're moving through, Norm knows that very well, he gets to see it every-
You know, that then even brings more consistency. Both general and zoning bylaws are gonna be in similar form.
Yeah, but then we have to go back and renumber all of these?
Every single thing will get renumbered then.
Not we, not we.
No, no, I get it, I get it, but the problem is, the we is the town right now. Because then the consistency across, if it's on a plan somewhere, or if it's referenced on a plan, it won't match up anymore. I see, my problem is engineering, we get this all the time, hey, can you just change this little symbol? It's in five different places. The cost of that's ridiculous, so people walk away from it because we hit them with the cost of a simple change of a number is in ten different places. That's, that's my only fear, I've seen this, and it's, and then somebody goes to reference something and it doesn't match anymore. That's my only fear. I have no problem moving forward. You know, like, what's the next article? Article eleven? I just, I don't, I mean, cause you've got right now, Peter, so like Article ten passed there, does that start like sixty-nine and then go to ninety-nine?
Yes, that's exactly correct.
But then what's, anybody have a thought process when we actually get to ninety-nine? Do we go to?
One hundred.
Oh, okay, oh, keep going, okay.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, I would say just keep going the way it is, but I see what they did up here. Lawyers do this all the time, I've seen enough legal documents where this is the beginning, this is the end, on the page. And I don't know, I don't, my question is, does the state require that?
No, it doesn't.
Okay. That's all they're doing?
I just, I don't know, I just think that, you know, as long as there is a reference to any of that that's been changed.
Yeah.
You know, I'm just trying to think of where we even use these.
Do we have them anywhere in any form? I mean, that's, that's gonna end up being the question.
I don't know, but the other, the major place I see is in public hearing notices. We usually cite a section number. And as long as you're aware, that it's a new section number. I don't, I'm trying to think of these like subdivision plans. Or, okay, so special permit decisions, maybe we'd have a section number.
So it could also therefore impact ZBA, potentially?
Yes.
Possibly, well-
It could be, I don't know, I mean, I'm just thinking sort of where could something like that impact?
My opinion is just keep going with what you've gone, but I don't see the need to, for cleaning this up, Peter, through my, this up here, if that disappears. If you've got this, this is the key to any document, is the table of contents.
The only thing that we don't have, and again, I haven't figured out exactly how to do some table of contents, is how to put page numbers on only the, on only the sections. If I put page numbers on the articles and on the headers,
It's gonna change.
That would all be, it would all be consistent, but it wouldn't look very nice.
Yeah.
So you wanted to know, Norm, if there are things I don't know about Word, there's one.
Well, you can go, you could, part of the heading, this is too much crap that I have to do. This, you can put over here the page numbers and it'll auto-update it, you know, with the dot, dot, dot over to-
Right, but how to do it on only the section numbers, that's the question. Cause you don't want to put them on the arti, cause the article ID and the article header are not-
Oh, you just wanted to put it to one through five, and that's it?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I get that. Well-
But as a fallback, I'd add them to the article and, and header just to have them.
I don't, I think if you just did like the, the numbers down here, then over to what page, from to and from? You know, like sixteen to seventeen or something like that, I'd be okay with that. But I don't think you have to, cause if you've got this reference, alright, I need to go to eight. I mean, right here, we can see what the numbers are, I don't really need this top page.
Well, until you get into some of the long sections that are literally pages long. You can't see them because the table of contents doesn't have pages, but when you get deep into sections eight, nine, not ten, cause ten was repealed.
Fourteen's pretty deep.
Fourteen's pretty deep.
Yeah.
And then that's also, again, a fourteen A and a fourteen B below it, which is where things get complicated. And, and in truth, a lot of the sections look similar, if you're just glancing at the headers. The section names are the same for Town Center and Village Center, I'm pretty sure, they're, they're common format throughout. So you wouldn't know automatically where you are in there, and this is the kind of thing that gets me a little concerned. Now, no, that wouldn't work either, same problem.
I don't have a problem if we figure, if somebody, you know, I don't know, my admins, I can ask when I get to work about how to get the numbering over there for the different pages that are associated with it.
I'm sure it's just a Google search, do the right thing, I find it very easy to get them, to get the level of headers that I want, but not to get page numbers on only certain ones.
Yeah, it's, it's just a function, and then once it's set up, it auto-updates all the time, so. I mean, I don't know, I like this format because it's been in town for, I don't know how long, and I'm afraid I don't know what else it's tied to. And I don't think we have the time nor the money to figure out everything that it's tied to.
Fair enough.
That's just my opinion, but I do agree, if, Peter, if this is giving you headaches up here, come on, I mean, you got a table.
Again, I don't know, I don't know how useful that is to the people who use the book. So I hesitate to make changes that I think would harm the usability of the publication. But it is, it's gonna be what it's going to be in the end of the day.
I don't know. Tim, I don't really share your concerns about changing that. I'm not gonna say that it would never cause any kind of problem, but I think it would be very rare, if any.
I don't know, I just-
I can just see the lawyers bill just-
Lawyers are gonna have nothing to do with this.
Oh, they will when somebody can't find something and sues us. I don't know, I'm just, with it, if this was a brand new town and starting out and we're starting from Greenfield, I'm okay with that, but taking a document that's been around for sixty, seventy years and changing it, I'm not too cool with that, that's just my opinion.
I feel what you're saying could happen.
I don't have a problem adding to it like you suggested, Peter, with numbers and, you know, maybe organizing a little bit, I think it's a great idea. I just don't want to start changing stuff that's mine. I mean, I usually like change, but in this case, it's been around too long. I just don't know what it's tied to. You can always ask KP to go research that.
Knock it off.
The other thing I am almost certain to do, having now worked with it for too long, is to increase the size of that font.
Oy.
It's, it's too damn small for me.
Having, adding more pages, Peter, I wouldn't have a problem with that, cause you're increasing the font, I mean,
That's really the size.
It's readable, yeah.
I agree.
Now, I also want to point out there are a few problems in this document. There are references to articles that do not exist.
We need to get those cleaned up in the next town meeting.
And, and if I could say, see, there's a reference to Article fourteen, Article fourteen has never existed. If I knew that it was section fourteen, I could call that a typo in good conscience, and just reference section fourteen to the Article fourteen. But that's, Article fourteen had, or section fourteen has nothing to do with the content where they're referring to it. When Article ten was passed, it referenced Article eleven that didn't exist. A couple of places referenced Article twelve, which became the marijuana moratorium, and then the licensed marijuana establishment.
They didn't go back and get cleaned up.
And they were before, the reference to Article twelve predates the existence of those articles.
We gotta clean this up.
There's another section that is self-referential, it says, has to be according to sec, you know, three D's I or whatever, and that's what this section is. So I couldn't tell you what it's trying to reference, I'm just going to point out that there are other things that need to be, if we're going to be really correct, need to be fixed.
Alright.
But that's outside the purview of what I'm talking about, that's not something I can-
But it's inside the purview of our group.
Yes, it certainly is.
So.
And I'm happy to send you to the entire bylaw review subcommittee, my working document that you can see, cause I have comments on everything that I see that's wrong.
Oh man, that'd be great, Peter, cause then we could put that together and then, and not, it's not gonna make this town meeting, but in May, get this thing cleaned up.
It could get cleaned up pretty easily, pretty substantially and pretty well, I think.
That would, that would be a major positive for this board to have it cleaned up. So we don't get into any issues down the road. Nobody wanted to do it, but there's marijuana bylaw, the growth management bylaw, have taken a lot of our time up in the last two years.
So. Do we have a direction to give, Peter, here? Or do you, you?
It sounds like if we just lose the headers, the only, I've heard two opinions, both opposing and no other opinions to know how the how the board itself feels as a whole, and I don't wanna, I'm not trying to start a fight, I'm not, and I'm certainly not asking for a vote. So if it's leave the section numbering the way it is, just go, just continue the continuous numbering section, lose the heading numbers at the top so that all becomes clear. And then find a way to add page numbers to the table, to the appropriate portions of the table of contents.
I like that.
Why don't you increase the font?
And increase the font.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, so moved.
So is this group interested in meeting with the bylaw subcommittee anymore to address anything here?
Oh, I'd like to get that, I'd like to find time in mind to get that document from Peter and meet with you, Marilyn, and get that baby cleaned up.
But that would be after Peter does his-
Yeah, after he gets-
Right.
Well, definitely.
Well, I'm happy to send it out, I'll send it out in the next couple of days, to everybody on the review committee. Assuming that the only person who's been at it since the last time I was there is Julie. So everybody else is the same, right?
Julie resigned.
Oh, she did?
Yes.
Yeah, but she, I thought she came back.
She came back.
She came back.
Oh, she came back?
Yes.
Right, I've-
But then she resigned twice. No, I mean, she did resign, and she came back and then we can work this out later, but-
Okay.
Okay. I just think it's a good idea, Marilyn, to get, we got an opportunity and this young lad's put the effort into it, let's take it and run, baby.
So would you either do it as a, like, Dick, do you want to be on the committee, revise the committee again? Show of hands, everyone who wants to.
I would, I would try, it just comes down to when I can.
Okay.
If I'm in country.
So we will revive the committee, I'll check with Julie.
And Bonnie. She just volunteered for another committee.
She's already-
Well, she would-
The three hundredth anniversary.
Oh. Well, that's not a real committee.
It's a fundraiser.
I said that on camera, didn't I?
Yeah.
That was a joke.
That's a fundraiser committee now, show me the money.
And hopefully a good idea committee.
Yeah.
It's Friday, Friday, Wednesday at five thirty?
Tomorrow, Wednesday or?
Well, probably not tomorrow, because you will be doing some work on it before we come back to the committee.
Yes.
But as a meeting-
I'll do all the changes that we spoke about.
And then that following Wednesday?
Whenever it was, whenever he's-
Yeah, yeah, whatever.
This could be in October sometime, but-
It's gonna have to be.
So, and then we will be meeting at five thirty on Wednesday, so.
Okay.
Oh, I have to play, I might be a little late.
All set?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks for your work, Peter.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item two, do we really want to get to that one?
Okay, update community hall annex, reservation, renovations and related. You have the, a copy of the letter that you sent to-
You have sent that particular letter?
Yes. To Mike Nicholson. I don't know exactly what exactly I want to get into on this. But following his receipt of the letter, he asked if I would meet with him. And we spent a fair amount of time discussing some things, some of which I don't think I can really address here. Some things I think I probably can. He will meet with us as a board. He indicated to me that he would email to me some possible dates. He seemed to be leaning towards the off Mondays of selectmen's meeting weeks. I have not yet heard anything from him regarding, you know, particular dates proposed. Yeah, let me get, let me get my thoughts exactly straight here. I think, I think he understands some of our concerns. You know, about a lot of the, the whole building thing. I've got a hunch, and I guess this is, you know, probably very particularly even just from, I wasn't at selectmen's meeting, but I did watch it on YouTube from last night, that he may very well not have all the answers that we're looking for. They may just not be there. Okay. A couple of things that I can specifically, and I don't think there's any problem with you mentioning them. I guess, first of all, the quotes proposed conference room. in the annex. I suggested to Peter Crane and then to Mike that rather than waiting for ConCon to just clean that stuff up, let's take the stuff wholesale, move it up to the second floor of the community hall, hire in one of the senior tax benefit, whatever you want to call it, write-off people to saw through and catalog all of that stuff for the ConCon. And that should at least more quickly free up that conference room. This is a little bit interesting because I suggested it, first of all, to Peter Crane, since he's now chairman of ConCon. He thought it was a pretty good idea. He did bring it to ConCon. They seem to be in agreement. I then mentioned it to Mr. Nicholson and he said that he had that idea too. Okay, I'll leave that at that. Beyond that, once that room is put into a reasonable state, I asked him if we absolutely would have use of that room for at least our regular meetings. He said absolutely yes.
So I'll be there tomorrow to help move this stuff up to the second floor?
Well, once again, I don't know how fast that's gonna move.
That's what I'm saying.
Well.
You, you get the date for crying out loud and, uh, I'll see whether we can find some help and we'll run it up.
I, you know, but I mean, I, I suggested, probably, I don't know if I suggested it to Mike, but definitely to Peter. I can't believe the DPW can't offer two workers for an hour to carry that stuff up to the second floor of the hall. Or wherever they decide they're gonna move it to. And other little just interesting tidbit, and I'm gonna go three ways on this. The big-screen TV. Mike indicated that he had received a donation of another big-screen TV. He didn't say better, bigger, or what, but he said that was the one that he was planning on putting up in that room.
Donation? Don't they have to go through Selector and all that? Yeah, I just, I got a problem with what's going on here. I am just.
We paid for ours. Ours is all set. I just don't have.
And Mike said, because Karen met with him, and I was gonna tell you, Norm, the discussion came up. It's ours. He'll put it wherever he wants. He's okay with that. So I was fine. Once she, that got passed back through me and I was gonna bring it to the board, that he's good. He's not gonna take that. He's gonna, wherever we want to put it, he'll have DPW put it up for us.
Which I'm, and I realize that's a short-term thing. I will tell you, and this is, I don't know, might be lighting some fire almost. In, in the eventual final move to Community Hall, which I'm assuming is gonna happen one way or another, whether we like it or not, and I'm hoping it's gonna be done, what I'm just gonna call the right way. I'm not necessarily confident of that at this point. Personally, I could care less about a big-screen TV. What I think we need, there is none in this room, but there is in the big room over there, a pull-down screen in the projector which will project a much, much bigger picture and much better.
Yeah, but it depends on, on the clarity of it.
It's pretty darn good. What I mean, the Bylaw Committee has been meeting in the Selectmen's Room. And what Peter's been doing is putting that document up on the screen in the Selectmen's Room. And it makes it very, very nice to be able to go through and read and see. So, you know, if, if it were up to me, I would push for a big pull-down screen and a projector.
A decent digital projector.
That, that's, like I say, that, that's kind of.
Those, those things are, I mean, we've got them at work and I know what they cost. Well, there's four digits involved, possibly middle four digits for a good resolution.
They've got one in the Selectmen's Office. They've got one in there.
Yeah, well, that's, this is, the library paid for all this.
Yeah.
The town didn't, so the library basically had paid for these right here. If we had to pay for them.
I've got a hunch cable probably paid for them.
Maybe, yeah.
But anyway.
Okay, I'll let you finish.
So, I, I guess at this particular point, I'm waiting to hear from Mike.
When's he leaving for Washington? Next week, week after?
I think it is next week.
Next week?
So my guess is it, well, it certainly won't be this week. Probably won't be next week.
Yeah.
All right, do, while he's gone, the selectmen, or they're the responsible persons anyways.
And?
Well, if we need something done in a hurry, it'll just.
There's no approved money.
No, no, I'm talking about cleaning the conference room.
Oh, for that, yeah, okay, again. I just, his, I'll let you finish, Dick. I'll shut up.
Yeah, I'm done.
I, I'm, I'm still at the main point of who gave the authority to put us out of our room in the ConCon? I don't find any edict anywhere from the FICOM, from anybody, from the Select Board, putting us out of that room. And if I'm not mistaken, at this point, the town administrator does not have jurisdiction over town buildings. The Select Board does, I thought.
Yeah.
So I'm still struggling with this.
I.
I know you're in the middle, Norm, and I get, and I apologize for that, but I'm just frustrated because we're, knowing, unfortunately, having a FICOM member in my household, I know there's no money and that, I don't see that building getting renovated anytime soon.
Let, let me just say that I believe that it is common practice for a town administrator to make the determination of assignments within the buildings.
Okay. But they typically go through hearings, discussions. None of that happened here.
It seems to me, yes, it should have, but obviously it didn't, but, that, that's about as far as I can go.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm not asking for you. It's, it's to Marilyn's point. We're asking for forgiveness again. And I'm just tired of the forgiveness, because we seem to do on the reciprocals of that all the time. And I'm just, again, and maybe I'm off on a tangent. I just, we don't have any place.
The thing is, you know, I think a sit-down with Mike is a very good idea. I think it is also very, very important that it be a constructive conversation. That it not be us against him.
Well, there, at, at this point, without any money, how do?
Doesn't get you anywhere.
Attorney.
I don't know how we're gonna get anywhere with, with, with a plan that has no detail, has no money to finance it, and we're years out from even getting a room. I, I just find that untenable as far as I'm concerned. And, and what are we gonna do? We're gonna be jumping? I mean, the suggestion I'd heard is, well, maybe you could use the wood studio. That would be great if it was secure and it was ours and we could put, we could put a computer, put you have everything in there. I'm okay with that, but I'm not sure that's a secure place.
That, I, I don't know, and this is my own personal feeling. Set up reasonably, I think that conference room can work. And, and once again, my big thing is for, and it isn't necessarily for every meeting, but for an awful lot of what we do, the idea of having immediate access to our records at the time of a meeting is very, very important.
Correct.
That they, uh.
Okay, and that's why I asked Nick, uh, very, very specifically about that conference room. Now, there are some times, obviously, when it won't work. If we have a public hearing, when there's gonna be ten or fifteen people, no, we're gonna have to move. We would probably have to move.
We do, we do that anyhow, Norm.
Yes.
Well, we could put them in the corridor, set up in the corridor.
But anyway.
Used to do that.
Yeah. So.
All right.
That's, that, that's where I am seeing that, you know, that whole process at this point. As, as far as the, the timeline on the Community Hall, the annex, I, on the Community Hall, I just, it would be awfully, awfully nice to have at least some kind of target dates.
Well, they're gonna apply for ADA grants to help with that, and that's gonna take, we're talking years out, you know.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's not gonna happen this year.
Can I throw another thing into the mix, Norm? Seth just got a, a.
One point two.
Or he's got, he got a grant for probably two to three fire employees. He doesn't have the space over there. That's gonna be the next concern of this town. How are we gonna house three new fire people?
And, and a truck, it's supposed to be a new truck, you know.
I, I just.
Yeah, the one point two million dollar grant, I think.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, there's a lot of things coming, and I can tell you who's gonna be at the bottom of the barrel.
Well.
And, and I don't have a problem with that, because town services are, are primary. I get that for fire and police and DPW, but we had a room.
So, and this conference room, is this, we would have access to that room and then also some office space?
Well, Dave has his own office now. And that's where all the planning board workers are, and that's literally right next to him.
Okay.
They did take that door, there was a door there between the two, and they took it out, correct?
I don't think so.
No, that was a closet.
Pardon?
That was a closet.
That was a closet?
There was a sink and everything.
There was a sink and, uh, a sink and a closet.
Now it's gonna be a pass-through to our conference room.
Well, that's what I was hoping, you know, we could use it as a pass-through.
The, of the other side of that whole thing, at least as far as I am concerned, and actually, this is a concern that I even mentioned to Mike, you have to realize that Dave isn't only ours.
Yeah.
He has other positions.
Right, so how come his room isn't better than what he has now?
That would have been nice, too.
After seeing that rug that's in there for crying out loud, give me a break for crying out loud. He should have had a brand-new rug in there for crying out loud. Give me a.
And, and anyway, and anyway, uh.
And I, I want him to have a new heating system put in, too.
The, uh.
Couple leather couches like Mike has? Nice. Don't even get me started.
The, the point that I did make to.
I feel he's gonna need a heating system.
The point I did make to Mike was that one of the things that I, I do realize that, yes, Dave does a lot more than just planning board work. And it's at least in my mind that I don't want to see his time being chipped away from planning board.
Yes.
By being assigned more and more and more and more things.
Yep, exactly.
So.
What was the feedback on that, Norm, when you mentioned that to Mike? He had to give you something or a look or?
I don't.
Didn't read him?
I didn't read him on that.
All right. Okay.
How could Norm read a twenty-four-year-old?
I'm real bitter, yeah.
Twenty-five now, what I mean, that.
That just means he's not good poker. He should be really easily pulled.
All right.
Anyway, I am still waiting. I guess the bottom of the line is I'm waiting. I don't know if I'm, maybe I'll be up tomorrow and read those plans, and if Mike is around, maybe I will just.
If you would, please.
Try to remind him. Well, if, if you want, number one, I'll remind him about who's gonna give us some dates. And if you want, I'll ask him if it's okay if we go ahead and start moving that stuff out of the conference room.
Yeah.
The other thing, Norm, I was gonna ask, and I'll reiterate with Sean, number seven. What's going on with the Bryce Lemon? I mean, that, I, I don't, maybe that's in here some other place, but I was gonna ask since that's part of the the discussion point.
I mean, how, how, how can we get filled in legally, you know, not stepping on other toes or what? I'd like to know, did we do something wrong? Or what, what?
That's what I'm looking, feedback.
Yeah, I, I'd have no idea what this thing was about. And how come legal counsel did not come to us?
It, it wasn't. It had absolutely nothing to do with the way the bylaw was written.
By, what bylaw?
The.
Growth bylaw?
Growth bylaw.
Oh, so this law's.
I, I don't believe there was any way, I don't believe.
I thought it was something to do with the, the plan that we had.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
The what?
Our plan with Bryce Lemon.
Yes.
That we might have done something wrong in writing the, the Orders of Condition, thanks.
That, I guess, might be open for opinion. When, and, and again, you know, I can't remember the, the entire timeline of Bryce Lemon. It started as Bryce Estates.
Correct.
It was smaller.
Yes.
He added the Lemon property. It became bigger. Okay, I don't have dates on when it became bigger. It was modified again even after it became bigger to move a bunch of lots.
Lots away, so he didn't have to put the bridge in.
Yep, yep, that was the bridge in the lower section of the property.
In one of those revisions, the special permit for the subdivision was noted as a new special permit, not a, an amendment to the special permit. Had it been an amendment, listed as an amendment to the special permit, then the subdivision might have been covered under.
Oh, because it was brand-new, it was covered under all of our new
Yes.
subdivision bylaws, not the ones from seventy-six or whenever this thing was put into. Okay, I'm still okay with that.
Okay. So, considering, and again, I don't even know which of those changes that happened under, to be perfectly honest with you.
And to me, that, that's where I feel, I, why should we be left in the dark? We should have been briefed, have an idea, so we know what was going on.
We don't make this mistake again, if it's a mistake.
That's just what, that's what went on in the lawyers' offices. Personally, I don't think it's a question of making a mistake.
Okay.
I think it was a call, there was a substantial change in the subdivision.
Mm-hmm. Correct?
Oh, we just signed an A and R under the state law. There was a substantial change in that estate law. We're saying it's a new special permit. We did nothing different. We did the same thing on Bryce Lemon. When they made a substantial change, they said it was a new special permit.
We made him do that, Norm. We made him, we made him do that because that he was, if I remember cleary, he, if I remember right, he wanted that sub, the old subdivision gone and this new plan in place.
I, you know, I, I don't have.
I, I, because we were, actually, we were down in the community center when this all was going on. I remember these meetings, these hearings down there. And that was key.
Bottom line, at least to me, we did nothing wrong. Absolutely nothing.
All right. So this was just basically a legal, um, that's the word I'm looking for, review and.
Legal parry.
Yeah, of what happened with the whole timeline of the new Bryce Lemon Estates subdivision, that's the word I'm looking for, design? Okay. Goes to the old one.
You know, I, I don't know if they.
Then why the heck does he still call it Bryce Estates?
I thought it was Bryce Lemon.
Corporation name is Bryce Estates.
So who owns it? Bryce Estates or Bryce Lemon Estates?
Bryce Estates owns Bryce Lemon.
But for the, let me ask this, for the sup, for the, what's the word I'm looking for, the, the homeowners, it's Bryce Lemon.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I remember, that document saying Bryce Lemon on the homeowners agreement. So Bryce Estates is the corporation and Bryce Lemon is the entity. Okay, I've seen that before.
So.
All right, I just wanted to find out, because if we did something wrong to Dick's point, I just wanted to learn from it.
There is, it's, well, that's, it's my opinion. That's just my opinion. My opinion is, no, we did absolutely. My opinion is, no, we did absolutely nothing.
Okay. Then, the next question I have, so all of our other subdivisions that were approved, that, again, this is hearsay, I don't have anything printed, that they are gonna be grandfathered into, or is that still under?
That, I.
Is that something we need to worry about, I guess probably is a better question.
You know, there's, and, and I, I did end up talking with Mike about the Bryce Lemon thing, and he kinda sidetracked me. Uh, because apparently there is still a third part, but I don't believe has been resolved on that lawsuit, to the best of my knowledge.
The rate development limitation bylaw, I understand, has been challenged. That was a separate issue, one of the three.
Mm-hmm, yeah, okay, uh, and like I say, he, he kinda sidetracked me on that, to be perfectly honest with you.
Okay.
And, okay, where was I going from there? Oh, uh, as far as, and that may have to do with the other subdivisions.
Okay.
Obviously, Cleo Blair feels that all of his subdivisions are exempt further.
Yeah, that's what I'd heard, I just, I didn't know if there was.
And that floored me when I heard that.
Yeah, that's four hundred, that's three hundred-plus houses.
Yeah, that's his opinion.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. That's for the courts and lawyers to work out. I just wanna make sure we didn't do anything wrong that helped, that led into that.
And right now, how are we doing on timeline on, on these subdivisions?
They've got till next year, twenty twenty, is it, if I remember?
Sure.
I don't know, maybe we should check into that.
I still think there's one of them that's.
Getting about time to do another check on, well.
It's two years is the number, we gave some extensions.
And to me, it, it could've sworn this, this coming month.
The only one is McAllister, I think. One in Noble Hill is approved.
Yeah.
Period.
Yeah.
Presidentate's approved, period.
They got special permits, though, don't they?
Yes.
So if they have no major construction in two years, that special permit's gone. And I'm gonna challenge that this time around, 'cause I've had enough of leaving special permits open for decades.
You can try, you can try.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, I'll go through you for that, but that's, I'm, I'm up to here with just leaving a special permit on the table. Just because, well, we, we picked up dirt, eh, no, you start your road, if you start your road, then I consider that some type of construction. Just leaving it there and, and going in and logging is not, uh, any type of construction. That's my opinion, yeah. And that's where KP's gotta tell me if I'm wrong.
Like I said, we can try.
Okay. KP? Well, that's our town attorney, right? Unless something's changed.
No.
Or something should, should change.
Were you here when he was talking about we should have our own lawyer?
We can do that, if I'm not mistaken. We can have.
It'll cost everything.
But it's gotta come out of our, our revolving fund, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, see, now, this is just an interesting thing, boy, is it interesting.
Okay, did I just open a can of worms?
Yes, you did. Um, when KP Law first came on, and, uh, I guess I'll say it was probably back when we had the, 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 the.
Marijuana bill?
No.
No.
Secretary.
Oh, Ms. Becker?
Yes.
Laurie.
When we had Laurie. Uh, and she was doing bills and all that kinda nice stuff. Basically, I kept fairly close in touch, okay, with our own subdivision spreadsheets and all that kinda nice stuff. Uh, also, whenever invoice came from KP Law at that time, the invoice moving forward to the planning board, it was an all-in-one invoice, with any planning board matter, matters highlighted, and we then paid that portion of the bill.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Uh, I know, at least Dave has been in contact with KP Law a number of times. I don't know on what particular issues, I haven't asked you, and I don't know. Uh, but I am gonna say, in at least the past six months or more.
We haven't gotten the bill.
I have not gotten the bill. So I don't know.
Whoops, I'll retract my statement and move back to, I don't wanna ask anymore.
Okay.
Well, uh, you know, listen to some of the people that I know, they felt that KP Law isn't the greatest.
You know, I, I have no way of gauging that.
I know.
Yeah, I don't either. You get what you pay for.
They're a very large firm, they obviously represent a bunch of communities in Massachusetts.
And I've seen some communities bow out from them, too.
Well, in their defense, at least in the last town meeting, this is my opinion, it seemed to me that they weren't given a lot of information to, not saying they didn't have mistakes, but they didn't have a lot of information they should have to prepare correctly. It would seem like it was last minute. That was, again, my opinion, looking from the outside of what they were trying to do, so I, I'm not gonna blame them a hundred percent, they've got some blame, but I think our select board wasn't effectively making sure they had all the information they needed in a timely fashion to do their job. Again, my opinion.
That's possible.
Yep, so, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna throw them, I do.
I can give you, you know, two, uh, you know, you know, two scenarios. I kinda get the feeling that Dave has been satisfied with what he's gotten from KP Law in, in general. Uh, I know Peter Crane has had a number of questions sent to KP Law, and he's still waiting for answers, and it's been months. So, yeah.
Yeah. Dave's tougher.
He knows how to get things done.
Okay.
Well, I'll hang tight.
So.
But I feel, I feel that, I feel that we should stay on top of what the heck is going on. I'd like a little bit more
Communication.
Communication, and sometimes, um, I feel that we're, we're really not getting enough.
Any chance, Norm, that, you know, occasionally we have a select board liaison, maybe just.
There aren't any liaisons anymore.
Oh.
They, they stopped them for a whole year or two.
So we have no.
No communications with the, with, with, with the select board.
Okay.
Hey, hey, turn around, look, look at the camera.
Oh, I will, and so therefore.
Just keep leaning forward.
Yeah, I know, I'm, I'm, I get this. I gotta get skinnier, then it won't happen. So if we wanna find anything out or have discussions, we have to get put on the agenda and go to the select board?
Should we ask the, well, the secretary?
I just, I find this, you know, this, this transparency and, and wanna work together just doesn't seem to be, it seems like words and not actions.
Yeah.
That's where, I don't know. I'm not looking to, to rock the boat, I just, if they've got an issue, or we've got something, we need to communicate, and having Dave be our in, intermediary seems ridiculous.
I, I don't wanna put Dave in a corner.
Yeah, that's what, it's not his responsibility to be our intermediate. The, the select board can easily come to our meeting, and if we have to, we'll go to theirs. I just, I'd like some communication, but I didn't know that, I didn't, I apologize, I didn't know that they'd stopped the liaisons, 'cause Mr. Stillings was here last meeting, so I thought it was still.
I mean, might've had another one to go to and just had a few minutes.
Okay, all right, so there is no liaisons, all right.
But you brought up that he's gonna be leaving for seven months, was it?
Yeah, for a few months.
Oh.
What Mitch told me yesterday.
Okay.
I guess has to do something with them, when security being restationed somewhere, maybe he was going to be doing Collins.
Yeah, oh, that's legit.
Don't know that for a fact.
I know, and Collins, they're good to a certain point.
Well.
I like to read faces.
I, well.
Well, like he did the video, the last, during the whole conservation.
Oh, okay.
He.
Skyped or whatever?
Skyped, yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm, I'm fine, I just, I, all I wanna do is have more of a communication barrier, but, or communication open between us and them. Um, so if they do have these issues with, with Bryce Lemon or something like that, they can bring it to our attention. Uh, anyhow, just a thought.
That's, well, it's, maybe it's easier said than done, I don't know.
All right.
So, Nick, you do want me to ask Mike about moving that stuff?
Please.
Okay. I have no idea what his reaction is.
Get her down.
No.
Okay, next, Edith Lane and Karen Way street acceptance request.
Denied. Holy, watch that.
Okay.
That looks like.
They were out to get me.
Dave, that, that, that looks like, that looks like blueprints.
That's real honest good as blueprints, like you don't see.
Oh, my, hey, that's got, that's got ammonia on it, hey, pass it over here.
I brought these just in case.
Yeah. Uh, I, I don't know if anybody is familiar with Karen Way and, uh.
I know it's a tropical storm right now.
They are streets in the heart of a subdivision called Sunny Hill Estates.
Yeah.
Oh, that was the one that was on, it was flooding and all that good stuff.
Circa nineteen sixty-nine.
Yeah.
Let's see if they're on Google Maps.
Hold on a second.
They're, they're good old days.
Karen Way.
Good chance he wasn't. That was three.
Hey, yeah, Karen Way.
And.
Who is the owner? Have you, uh, do we know for a fact that this individual still has the property?
Uh, I have no idea.
Can I just maybe?
My, my guess would be the, it, it is still probably the Dial-Away Company Incorporated.
I, I don't think so, but.
Just by way of background, the applicant, being the homeowners, requested the town accept the road.
Correct.
They approached the select board. The select boards refer this to the planning board.
Correct.
Prior to having a hearing on this, if a hearing is to be had, the idea is to just have a general discussion, see what the board's pleasure is on moving this or not. That's where the gist of it. At least, that's the basic, the basic part. Obviously, there's other questions which are tangential and all that, I know that, but.
If we're gonna, we'll finish, go ahead, Dave, I'll let you finish.
I understand there's other questions that are related to it, but the core is, is as I just described.
I, A, number one, does that gentleman still own it? Because it was, wasn't it his nephew that came in and was taking over and?
Then it was Israel?
Not in Israel.
It was in Israel, right. And then, I remember, uh, the nephew went to the town to try to give the property to the town and skip taxes, we don't want it. We want the taxes on it.
We also wanted to try to give it to DCR.
And DCR rejected it, too.
Is this the one, Norm and Dick, where they were trying, and I think it's before you, you guys came on? They, I was just new on the board, and they were trying to put in an over fifty-five area. Senior, I remember this. Yeah, and, and they couldn't get past the, uh, the.
Wetlands.
The wetlands.
I guess it was, or something.
I remember this, wow.
Now, if, if, if it's not, should you ask the Board of Assessors or, or the treasurer, have the taxes been paid on this stuff, the remaining land? Where is it?
Where's Karen Way? I guess I need to ask that question.
Right off of by Sherwood Drive and Prescott.
Is that this one right here?
The short one.
If you get out.
Oh, there it is, okay, sorry.
Uh, you get on Ma, you know, Maple Ave.
Yeah.
To Prescott Street.
Yeah.
And then off of Prescott Street, right there, it's Sherwood.
It's a pain through, it's a pain through.
Yeah.
Okay, Edith Lane goes out to here.
Yeah.
Karen Way stops here.
I thought it went around the corner.
And here.
Okay, and they wanted to extend that.
Where, where's, okay, is Prescott Street?
No, Karen Way, literally the pavement, the road, the clearing, stops here.
Yeah.
Okay, so it never came out to Prescott?
Never came out to Prescott.
And never connected?
This was Sunrise Circle or something.
Yeah. Yeah.
I like the Dial-Away Company.
How many, um, are these all built out?
They're all built, you know, Edith Lane is totally built out, and again, and again, this is something that I feel is very, very important. I'm going to say here and here, those four houses are built.
Mm-hmm, but the side ones never got.
Maybe, maybe there's one more.
I think there's one more up there. I think there was one lot left to go in order to get out onto Main Street. Onto Prescott, rather.
And they want, they're asking for acceptance of Karen Way the way it is right now?
Yes.
Well.
Help me out, help me understand how that benefits the town.
I know it has two huge barriers.
It's, the benefits are to the homeowners.
Hmm, okay.
And this is different, this is not Dial-Away Company requesting acceptance.
No, it's the homeowners, correct?
It's the homeowners requesting.
Is that what, is that that signature that you got there, Dave?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it. And I, I guess part of, a couple of things that kinda prompted this, I think I remember hearing, that the residents found that they didn't get, their road swept this spring, there's a road sign missing, I don't know if they've been asking for it or whatever, and it wasn't put out. And basically, you know, if the road isn't accepted by the town, the town does not have to maintain it.
Let me ask a question, Norm. Is the town road right now just Sherland, so this one and this section is quote, private?
Yes.
Is that a correct statement?
Is Sherland the town road?
Yes, I, I went in and I took a look at it, and according to town records, uh, the town accepted something like sixteen hundred and fifty feet of Sherland.
Of Sherland, okay.
Out to Prescott.
And that's.
Yeah, right down to where it turned into dirt, or, well, way back it was dirt, it's probably loaded with trees now.
So that is, yeah, nine.
So Sher, Sherland picks up from here, picks up down here, it continues this way, and that's about the sixteen hundred feet.
Yeah, there's nine, eight, there's nine, eight, okay.
So, and anyway, uh.
And then there was a, uh, wasn't there a connection to, was it Blueberry Lane, or something like that?
Briarwood?
Briarwood.
Okay, so, Norm, is this the end right there?
Connection, looks like it's not.
Houses here?
It's not connected.
Remember?
It's, uh, is a sewer line that comes down now, MWR.
'Cause I remember a cart path or something.
Yeah, sewer, the sewer line for MWR is down through there.
Okay, so the only thing that they're asking for is this and this little section right here, where it ends here, and maybe ends here, okay.
Which, uh.
I can buy the Edith Lane, I'm just having a tough time with Karen Way.
And I can remember being on Concom Planning Board, we went over there, and I can remember, um.
We walked it, I remember, 'cause I walked with you guys.
Yeah, Bobby Bigelow had a, was over there working with his backhoe and trying to fix the subdrain on the side of the road.
Drainage problems, I remember, uh, but, uh, I, I guess, first of all, getting anything out of.
Ain't gonna happen.
The bond, I think was, I thought you looked at the bond one time, was five hundred dollars?
I had.
Or something like that?
I had, uh.
That's a street sign.
Check on any bond that, that she might be holding, there's nothing.
There is nothing.
Oh, so if there was a five hundred dollar bond from sixty-nine, compound interest would pay for this freaking road?
Yeah.
So.
Well, I think ownership should be concluded first in order to legally.
For the town to take it over?
Yeah.
I agree. Is there any way to have?
That's something for the lawyers to decide. That, and that, and once again, as far as I'm concerned, that's in the selectmen's.
Norm, should we, through Dave, ask, um, KP to basically do a title search, to, to Dick's point, on this area, and just say, who owns it? Just to be, to verify, because if it is.
What's the taxes? I mean, you know, Becky should know who, who owns it.
I don't see.
Is there any incentive to that?
In this particular case, I don't see that that's necessarily really our business. I may be wrong. I don't really see, you know, if we, if we were accepting a road, street, you know, from a, an active subdivision plan being petitioned by the subdivision owner, okay, that's one thing. You know, that's a standard thing. This is just a whole different.
But the, the, the road does not belong to them.
Uh.
The road belongs to whoever owns, still owns it, whether, you know, it's nobody now or, or somebody.
And like I say, to me, that's for the selectmen to decide.
Well, then, why don't we tell the selectmen, find out who the owners are? Well, then the, why don't we tell the selectmen, find out who the owners are? And then get back to us.
But they got a petition in, don't they, that they want to get this on the, uh-
Well, the petition, to me, you know, there's a, that's where the, I hate even saying, the lawyer should be involved right now because I think they're taking it out of step.
Instead of getting this on the, uh-
No, it's not out of step, other than-
Other than the fact that we, how does the town take ownership of that and, and take it over?
Not legally known who owns it.
Exactly. You have to have who owns that thing in order to get it written off.
But that's selectmen's business.
Well, then why, you know, then send it back to them and tell them, hey.
Well. You know, I'm, I tell you, I'm not ready to dictate to the selectmen what they're supposed to do.
Well, I will. I'd be more than happy to tell them, hey, it's their responsibility. I'm sorry. You know, it's gotta be a, a lineup of how the hell we're gonna lay this thing out.
Cause to Dick's point, Norm, my, once we establish who legally owns it, okay, say it, it was the Dial Away Corporation that's defunct, so, um, in perpetuity it now goes to, uh, to being divided among the property owners. Then I get what they're trying to do. Um, but my next question is, since we're in charge of the roads in town, do we ask to have this road to today's specifications?
It should.
And there would be the problem.
It would be nice, but we can't put that on those homeowners.
Who we put it on? We don't have Sunny Hill Estates anymore.
But if the town has a lien on it, then the town has the right to turn around and sell some of the property, take the money to help.
That, you know, that's a possibility.
Yeah, that's true too.
Once again, I don't really think that's our business.
To me, for kind of, that's where you're gonna get the-
I agree with Dick in this standpoint. We need to, we need to, there should be a, Dave, I like what you did here. I like this for the road, but I think we're, what, we're, we're, this, what's going on here is way before this. Cause if, if we're gonna get into this public street layout and acceptance procedure, we need to know who owns that road. And I agree with Dick on that, so, and, and I, I, I get it that we shouldn't tell the selectmen what they should do, but legitimately, they should know legally who owns this before they send it to us. For this, for the start this procedure that you laid out.
Bring it up on the screen and, and let's take a look at that property and see what it-
Just to clarify what this procedure's doing, which we're, we're getting ahead of ourselves a little.
Okay.
Cause this is one distinct topic, but-
Oh, I'm sorry.
This procedure is made specifically for a subdivision that's a current subdivision such as Fair Hill.
Oh, okay.
The board saw last time. This is not, this is only designed in as much as B would cover other situations, but the primary thrust of this procedure is for subdivisions that are currently in progress. So Bryce Lemon, this would apply to. Although Section B does speak to this type of situation, which has less of a rigorous requirement, but that's a separate topic. I think what we're trying to do here tonight, get guidance from this board, whether or not this board would want to have a hearing on this within the forty-five days of the referral from the select board or not have a hearing and just let the clock tick.
I don't think-
And then the, the action can happen next after the forty-five days. This board is not obligated to, to make a recommendation one way or the other.
I, I would like to do something, and again, I'm no, I'm not a lawyer, but it's sort of what we did in the town meeting. This needs to get referred back to the select board and please explain to us legally how we can even act on this or make any type of hearing.
We, we don't, well.
Cause if we have a hearing on this, can we legally have a hearing? Because we don't know if this prop, if those roads are owned by the homeowners or if they own, or if they're default to the-
Is your homeowners association owning it in there?
No, no.
It wasn't.
A public hearing is to do nothing more than to get public input.
But after that, but what are we doing after?
We're not doing, we're, we're just up against a wall. We're not helping the people out by having a public hearing.
And that's, actually, see, my, my feeling is I, I don't see there being any real sense to having a public hearing. My, and again, maybe, I'm, I'm taking a very different view of this than probably most of you. My, my thoughts are that we simply say that, you know, we have, you know, we looked at the plans. And our major concerns are, one, two, three. Number one, we don't have Aspil planes. And there probably cannot really be Aspil planes. Okay?
Unless the town or somebody-
Number two, the infrastructure that's being accepted is some at least fifty or more years old. It is probably gonna require more maintenance.
And upgrades.
And upgrades.
Yep.
Number three, we have to clearly define the boundaries of Karen Way. Where that pavement ends, I don't know if it ends in the middle of these lots, at the lot lines, or where.
Here's the other question, Norm.
And it's over fifteen hundred feet or over a thousand foot.
So I was gonna get it.
As far as I'm concerned, it's just here's some information for the selectmen.
I'm okay with that, Norm. I like that.
I believe it as that.
I, I don't think we need to have a public hearing on something we can't really do anything about.
Yeah.
Because to Dick's point, if you go from Prescott Street to the farthest point of Karen Way, is that over a thousand feet? Cause then it's a dead end road. And that's beyond our current-
If you go down-
How long is Edith?
I didn't look.
How long, yeah.
Edith, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Eight, nine, ten, eleven. It's over a thousand feet. So that's-
Especially when you, you know, then you go-
So that's, that's a dead end road that we can't accept in town now without some type of variance.
You know, and again, as far as I am concerned, in our quotes, I'll call it notice to selectmen.
That'd be like number four.
Number, number four, uh, it is likely that the road does not meet present subdivision requirements.
I'm fine with that. I don't mind, this is my opinion to the board, that we give bullet points to the select board.
Yeah, and, you know-
Please check on the Dial Away Company and see if they still exist.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, somewhere I would bet-
The last thing I saw was in nineteen ninety-six against Auburn. They had a, a court case. Something about structures.
Yeah, well, I don't, well, you were saying that apparently there, this Martin Israel and, and companies are some major landholders.
Yes, there were, there was, there were quite a few brothers involved.
Non-conforming structure uses.
Because the, the way they laid it out, it was, uh, one brother owned one parcel and another brother and the wife and-
Yeah, they check aborted it.
Yeah, they check aborted it and worked.
Twenty-eleven.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't know. And, you know, that, to me, that, that's the way, you know, I'm thinking of it. The, the other side of this is to me.
Can you guys get on the Board of Assessors map?
I guess, I guess I gotta go with a loop.
Yeah, just this thing, you can't see much of it. Okay. I have my eye pad, I can do it.
I think at this point, these homeowners kind of deserve these to be town roads.
I, I have no qualms with that whatsoever, but we need to do it correctly. And to think a little bit forward maybe on this?
You know, I, I took a drive down there, just two days ago. Okay? The road surface is on its last legs.
Oh, just like overlook road.
Uh, you know, probably within, you know, two or three years, it's gonna need to be repaved.
Yeah.
At that point, punch it through to Prescott and let's be done with this.
Exactly. If, if there is no owners and the town has a lien on it, a tax lien on it. I'm gonna find out, you know, tomorrow. I'll find out tonight when I get home because this is-
I mean, from the standpoint of Bullet Five, I guess, suggestion to the Select Board slash DPW, from a safety standpoint and from access, if you've got a hundred and fifty feet of road you need to punch through to get to Prescott, and you're gonna accept this as a town road, get it done. Like I say- Mr. Buckley.
He'd love that.
That's why I say if there's property left there and the town had a lien on it, then turn around.
You sell the property and use that, use that money to-
Use the fund to-
I'm fine with that, especially if that corner, those two corner properties are still available and you, they could take them by, I mean, Becky's gonna have to go through the whole land court thing to get them, but that doesn't hurt.
No. And I believe for the likes of time, they probably could do it quicker.
Norm, did you say this is nineteen sixty-nine this map is?
Yeah.
So it's fifty years old. So we don't even know.
Hey, the drainage piping could be asbestos pipe.
Yeah.
I believe it was. To be honest with you, I think it was. And the sewer line too.
So it doesn't explode and burn or just burn?
Which, I, I, I don't know. There seems to be-
Oh, if the town accepts it, it's a suit of hell out of its first best.
Yeah.
Reasonable acceptance of my idea anyway to not bother with a public hearing and simply-
I agree with you.
Let the selectmen know that we have observed the following thing.
I don't think we need to take a vote on that. I just think it's through you, Norm, that we should put these bullets together and get it to, um, the select board. And hand them back this nineteen sixty-nine map. But I do think they should mention something to them about checking to Dick's point, the legalities and what we can do.
I watch these things. I watch you guys on the, doing a good job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well.
I'll hide. I'll be voting this year, please.
Who's it? Who's it, Mike?
Yeah. I just-
Oh, just another thing that I already brought up to Dave. To be completely honest with you, I kind of think we need to start thinking about at least looking into rescinding the remainder of this subdivision.
That's a good idea. Say that again, please.
We need to look into rescinding the remainder of the subdivision.
Oh, that's a bit of a-
The rest of it.
Yes and no. If we rescind it, then the, the lot sizes of, if the town turn around and sold it, would the lot sizes change at all between then and now?
So it's only protection is not anyway.
Yeah.
That was part of the-
Yeah, you got a point.
That was part of the problem.
I, I'd get that, rescind it and then-
We have any idea how many lots are still open?
Well, let's put it this way, all of Sunrise Circle.
And here's Karen Way up here. Look how many are on Karen Way up here. All those one on the, on the sides are probably-
All of Sunrise Circle.
I bet all these are.
Where does, yeah, cause Sunrise, okay, all of these.
Yeah.
Yeah, a bunch.
And I'm betting all of these here too.
And it came up the road too. It came up, I think, it just Sherland Drive went around the corner, went down just a few houses and that was it. So it was still like maybe-
So you think this, this, and then all of these right here probably are stuff?
I would say offhand, it was probably on that road there, uh, two on the upper side or maybe three and, and, um-
That's it.
Then, and maybe three on this side here. So.
So there is a procedure for that eighty-one W, Chapter Forty-one, the Subdivision Act allows for a rescission of a subdivision, except it would not affect the lots in the subdivision which have been sold or mortgaged in good faith and for valuable consideration, uh, et cetera, et cetera. It seems that would apply to the lots that have nothing. So there is a procedure for that. It involves a public hearing, the record, um, and other procedural things.
I say instead of public hearing, rescind the thing.
Well, I, I would, once again, I would, I would have to suggest that we go and present it to KP.
Would obviously want to take a hotter course of work. But there is a procedure for-
The names, I see, uh-
There's a, uh, Norm's dad's on here, David.
David Anderson.
Cecil Blair, Becker, is that, Bedder, Bedore?
Bedore.
And then Edwin Elstrom, June, Elstrom Junior?
Yeah.
But that's, is that, is that senior?
That's Senior's father.
Oh, gee.
Any of those people still alive?
I don't-
And here's a, here's Irene Amstrom. She's still alive.
No.
No, Irene passed away. But she, she was the town clerk.
You can see the formality of the conditions of approval.
Yeah, I can see that. And let's see, at this time, I was three years and a month.
There's still a lot of land there.
And there's a lot of wetlands that are involved. Yes. And also there's other property, uh, for the Clario had property. Heading towards Main Street.
So the board is going to report that back that the board is not inclined to have a hearing, however observes several issues which I think are not enough.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Need to give these some special protection.
Yeah.
Fragile.
Save those and we can frame them to go in our new office.
I like, I like that. I like that very much. Should we take them in the, in the other room and try it out right now?
Okay, uh-
Yes, there's a cirque room lady here who wants to go home.
Street acceptance procedure update. Uh, this is the latest and greatest, and I don't know, I'll let you just kind of go through it.
Sure. So I'd modify this. I haven't, I didn't necessarily track and change, but I can, I'll provide a brief presentation as to what those are. So in, in Section One Layout, I added the three months. This was the time by which the planning board would recommend that an applicant come to the planning board to start the process, to review the plan and what they have and what's outstanding. So I added the three months. And I also had a language that the planning board may notify the Department of Public Works to provide advice and feedback to the planning board. Cause in the ordinary case, the DPW is going to want to take a look at it for subsurface and things that are gonna be within the town right away.
Yep.
So is there anything you want me to add with respect to Public Works, DPW's responsibilities, or just leave it general like that?
Okay, I'm just kind of curious. It says the applicant should request the planning board to hold a meeting. Not a public hearing?
I, I did that again. I, I'm not, I think in one part I have a hearing and I didn't, I didn't fix it up in one A.
Okay, so that's, that's gonna be the, the here.
A here it is. Right, we did talk about that last time. I, the reference exists, yeah.
Well, that's there and there.
And then what I added was a Section B, which is meant to address all other situations, the ones that are not part of a current subdivision, but other ones, such that if the applicant wants to request a meeting with the planning board, the applicant can. And then a, a discussion can happen, but not as rigorous as one A a month. That's for active ongoing subdivisions. One B is for everything else.
Does B? B is kind of contradicting what happened here, because this was a position submitted to the selectmen.
Well, this is work, so one A and B are things that happened prior to the applicant submitting its petition to the select board. These are all steps that come before. So in this case, we've already had the referral from the select board to this board.
So this is out the window, basically. This shouldn't have been done before, it can't to the select board, correct?
It's optional. This is optional. Applicant may request a meeting with the planning board.
Oh, the may, okay, I didn't see that.
If they, if they want to get feedback in the way that you've done it tonight, if, if the applicant did that tonight, they'd be hearing what the board's already talked about in hearing of B.
Okay.
If they didn't already file with the select board. So. I'll let it, I don't know, if you see anything there you'd like to add or subtract or what have you, I can-
Let me ask a question, cause typically we do this. Should, for any of the, the road layouts, um, and I don't see this in here, should we involve the police and fire?
Ordinarily, it's an engineering matter, a planning board matter, because engineering department, the DPW is concerned with things that will become town property, such as catch basins, drainage, water lines, sewer lines, and this testing that DPW will do on those infrastructure items prior to acceptance. So it's really about the infrastructure. items prior to acceptance, so it's really about the infrastructure per se, not pub, not safety.
Right, but should, should in here have our engineer, or our town engineer be mentioned or involved?
The consulting engineer?
Yeah.
Yeah, somewhere.
Well, that's.
Or, they could say planning board or its representative, which would cover our.
Or their Quinn, or the engineer.
Yeah, they'd cover, yeah, or its representative, that's just a suggestion.
Yeah, that's a good point, cause Quinn usually very strongly involves in this.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'll find a place to make, put that in.
See the. Okay, I'm, well, I'm having, I'm having a little bit of, of a problem between, see now there are requirements in our subdivision regulations. There's the, you know, the requirements for the ASBIL plans and all of that kind of nice stuff, which is not mentioned in here, it probably doesn't need to be mentioned in here, but.
It's right there.
It's in the first, uh, first paragraph has a footnote.
Yeah.
I'm pointing to the subdivision regulations as what they have to show compliance with.
Yeah.
So I have my footnote here, anything about the exact references there.
Oh, okay.
And if they want to talk to us, we can have a conversation with folks, this is kind of meant to be not overly prescriptive or.
This is a catch-all sort of.
A five-page document, I'm trying to condense it down to.
Yeah, no, I like that.
The only other thing I'm just looking at back in this one A, it says this meeting is recommended at least three months. Recommended or required?
That's the board's call.
Required. That puts a, yeah, puts it right to them, you must, within three months.
Yeah, required.
That's kind of the direction I'd go in.
I'm, I'm agreeing with you, Norm, just because we know it's went on the pass where, showed up two weeks before the meeting.
There you go.
Can you get, can you approve this?
Yeah, well, you only recommended we came in.
Yeah, so, I, I like the required, I, I do, just because of what we've seen in the past.
Alright, fair enough, I'll make that change there, and that's for one A in particular, one B is gonna be less. And the rest of it's pretty much unchanged from last time with the exception of D two, where I bring in the DPW at the play.
That's good.
Okay, wait, wait a minute. The notify shall, the planning board shall notify the Department of Public Works of the request and request DPW of the request.
Well, thank you, no, I, I, yeah, thank you, no, in request that the DPW will take a look and review the request.
We're going over to your office and I'm looking in your drawers for that bourbon.
So thanks for that.
Could use a hot shot right now.
No, no, it's like.
No, no.
But you see what, yeah, okay.
This is what happens when you spend at least two hours every single week working on rewriting bylaws.
Yeah. Your eyes get, your eyes get fuzzy, but in, I miss that, I really kind of miss that.
What?
Uh, zoning meetings.
Oh.
Cause I, I really enjoyed doing.
Oh, yeah.
We'd, I bring in the, um, the consulting engineer at the play under D one, two, as well.
Yes.
Yeah.
It, it's, okay, there's nothing specific.
Well, they, they don't have to do A and B, it's D that's required.
But there's, there's nothing specific in our subdivision regulations about engineering review.
No.
No.
For acceptance, so it's gotta be in there somewhere.
But it was really important for the ASBILs, have Quinn look it over and give us an opinion, as Dick, we found out with the ninety-one issues at Bear Hill.
Yeah, well, that's one of the things I wanted to, you know, ask, but it's probably not here. Is it something that we should have, uh, well, let's, let me step back here, somebody was talking about a house lot. Building inspector was, in Pleasantdale, and the woman, uh, thought the setback was from the edge of pavement. There are no bounds on roads to speak of.
No.
Why not? The state does. I think it's, I, I think it's every five hundred foot you'll see a cement marker.
Oh, yeah.
And I, I feel that, um, in a subdivision, why not? They, they supposed to have markers or pins in the ground?
For center of the road.
But center of the, the person's property should have, have bounds.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Should have bounds, okay, so if that edge of that bounds in from there, is the edge of the road, or is it? It should.
Uh, most roads, don't they have a center pin in the center of the road so they can measure from left to right?
No.
No.
I'm in the wrong part of the country then.
I, that's why I'm thinking, we, we, we may need to have some kind of a.
One of the things I've been kind of advocating for that we put into our subdivision regulations, okay, that all corners of lots created.
Yeah.
Must have permanent bounds.
In the subdivisions?
No, not subdivision, A and R's too.
Oh, I agree with you.
As a matter of fact, you know, that's one of the things I wrote in about your, uh, Campbell Street Court, I feel, you know, things like that, uh, you know, the estate lots and anything else should have bounds, not necessarily as a whole bunch of corners, but something that's gonna be easy to pick up and go from.
Actually, I talked with, uh, Quinn quite some time back, and I know where towns do require them. I don't think most of them require the big square cement bounds.
Yeah.
But personally, that's what I'd like to see.
In all honesty, I do too, because for the average homeowner, what better thing to go and say, this is where my bounds are, period.
Mine says the rock right there on the corner, I mean.
Yeah.
Thing is, essentially, I remember somewhere someone saying that setting each one of those things is a costly lot of four hundred bucks.
I paid a hundred and twenty or a hundred and fifty to have just iron put in mine when I just had it redone about five years ago by Ann, Ann, Ann Ritz, sorry, I can't pronounce, Ann, it's A N R Y.
And Drizeak.
Yeah, they came out and, and did mine because I had to make sure my properties, I know after ten years, you can take property if you've been mowing it, unless it's been re.
But, I mean, I, I could, you know, whether it's metal or concrete, I don't care, to me, for kind of, it's the homeowner's advantage of having it there, and I know that the developer doesn't want to spend that kind of money, but I'm sorry.
Number five.
Yeah.
Guess what?
Number five?
They don't have five.
Continuing review of subdivision regulations.
Oh, 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 oh.
Not tonight. That's what we should get to.
Why don't we have a business meeting and do that?
The thing is, that's. That could be a whole mean on its own. Part of our review of subdivision regulations.
Why don't we pick one week that, one of the two weeks of, in November or something like that when we're a little slow, and call that a business meeting? And just basically focus on the subdivision.
If we're ever slow.
Especially, yeah, I, I agree.
We haven't had a business meeting in five, six, seven years. We need to do it.
We need, we need to.
Okay, back to, uh, this checklist. Anybody see anything?
Rest of it was unchanged from C onward, except for adding the planning board shall be notified, uh, notified the, uh, the DPW.
This, and you said I'd mention, it should be, mention the town engineering in there someplace also?
The consulting engineer, I'll add that party as one of the, uh, party to take a look at this.
I guess Dave, my question is, is H, I'm trying to figure out, I don't think I've ever been a party to that, or, or what, and I apologize, if I'm jumping ahead, we can go back, I just, I got there and I'm trying to figure out, what does that entail?
This is a step that happens after the approval, it's not a planning board stuff.
Okay.
It's between the Select Board and the applicant to determine costs related to, to accepting the roadway and the other improvements. I, this is just the generalized process from beginning to end, the planning board's part is one section of this, not the entire.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it was after.
That's correct.
But wouldn't we give the Select Board the recommendations of what they need to do to make that road acceptable? I mean, that's, so they've got a guideline for their costs?
We're also working with the DPW independently of the planning board to assess those kinds of costs.
Okay.
So there's, there's, there's levels of process here.
Okay. Alright.
So basically, after D three, it's also.
Correct, I haven't made any changes since last time on those items.
So. The thing is, and, and once again, it's just, uh. Yeah, we can comment on this part, but I think it's up to Select Board to comment on the rest of it.
That's exactly right, this is the overall process, which consists of the various parts, one part is a planning board's part, but just to be complete as possible in general, it's the whole street acceptance process from beginning to end.
Okay. I'd be curious, Dick, to ask them about H on all the acceptances, you got your, can I see your cost sheets for all the roads you've accepted?
Yeah, yeah, really.
I don't think it's ever been done as far as I can recollect.
What were you saying in this?
On, um, Marilyn, I said, I'd like to ask the Select Board, could I see your cost sheets on all the roads that you've accepted, and, uh, what's the cost gonna be? And I have a feeling there'll be a blank stare coming my way, I don't think it's ever been done, in my opinion.
Like I say, I, I don't even have a hint really what H would involve.
Yeah.
It would be.
I would guess the DPW would probably walk it down and see what's not up to code, is my guess, with Quinn, I would hope.
Yeah.
And.
Cause we sort of do that as part of our ASBIL plan, don't we? For the roads in a subdivision, I mean, just, let's focus on the subdivision, we typically do that at H, you know, like, clearly, you don't have the, uh, the, uh.
Manhole.
Manhole covers in.
No, we, we, we do the, we do the inspection, we create the, you know, the.
Punch list or whatever.
Punch list and all that kind of nice stuff, but establish anticipated acquisition costs.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I don't.
What would that be?
It doesn't make any sense to me.
A lot, at the back end, it's a lot of legal work that has to happen.
Okay.
Check titles and deeds.
It would be lawyer's fees.
A lot of that is what is, was, we're talking about here. Not so much the nuts and bolts of, you need to fix this.
Okay.
Have the board make a favorable recommendation, and close out the subdivision or part of it, it's a whole different thing.
Which is sort of what we're asking for Karen Way and Edith.
Yeah.
Okay. Good job.
Alright.
Before I forget it, pass that up.
Denied.
Okay, is there anything else?
It's not reasonably anticipated in, what do you mean that was?
I am keeping my mouth shut.
No, don't do that.
Alright, alright, Weekly Market Bulletin, anybody wanna read the Weekly Market Bulletin from New Hampshire? I'd like it, like it back when, you know, next meeting if I could, but I brought it to Dave just to let you know, because in the thing, it had agritourism up there. And, uh, we've been going through, uh, a little thing about zoning and agritourism and whatever, so just a, you know, New Hampshire, it goes way back to eighteen nineties and it was very interesting.
And through the chair, I've joined the at-large committee of the HPPD on the RDIC.
Oh.
And, uh, a gentleman came before the, uh, RDIC, Mr. Richard Schultz, wanting somebody to give a recommendation on his wedding plan business that was coming up for the RDIC, and I suggested to him, that type of discussion's probably better with the planning board of what you want to do and possibly zoning and all that stuff, instead of the RDIC, it made more sense, so I thought he was gonna talk, I'd asked him, Dave, to get with you and get on the agenda, but obviously he didn't, so.
Gee, thinking about doing it on the RDIC property?
No, 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 well, that's what I was trying to figure out when he was there, cause I thought that's what he was there for, but no, he wants to do it on his property, but there's some zoning issues that I don't know all about, and I just, I said, this is something you need to bring. Yeah, I wanted to add some structures and stuff like that, and I said he needs to really get, I had, suggested him to come before the planning board.
I think it might be premature for that discussion, I think what we're looking at in general terms is agritourism, how that fits in with the zoning bylaw, how that fits in with the APR requirements, and to determine what the next steps are, he, if he wished to come, it'd be premature because.
He was looking for a letter.
Uh, that might not be viable at this point, because it's early on in that process, I think we're early on in the process in terms of understanding what, if anything, needs to happen, or whether it's by right, there's many questions we have to look at. Uh, so there were some initial discussions, but, uh, level of support prior to those other questions, if you folks want to do that, that's your call, but I don't know that that's.
Well, my, my whole problem with it was is, and again, I don't know who, who he was talking to, but, and again, this is me just being an out, uh, outsider looking in. I don't see how the town can restrict him, and we have two other farmers that are doing the same thing, so, and they don't have zoned properties that I know of for business, so um, I, I'm just, I'm struggling with that, and the two I'm talking about is Mr. Jordan, Mr. Clark. If he wants to do the same thing as them, is have weddings, I don't see the issue.
Well, he's got a restaurant up there.
He's got a restaurant up there too, so that's, how did that happen? How can you have a commercial business? Anyhow, Dave, that, those were some of the things I was just like, ah, I don't know if that's ZBA, I don't know if that's us, and, and if you guys are working on it with him, that's fine, I'll stay.
We're working with the.
Alright, I'll stay. I just didn't think it was appropriate for the RDIC, that's my, was my main.
Yeah, if it's not on the RDIC property, it's.
No, but it, the amount of traffic, it might be drawing, it would be nice to, for people to know that, that might want to, hey, we need to do some such and such on the, on a property there RDIC has, that might coincide with what he's doing.
Yeah, I saw Ju, I saw.
Putting BBS up there would be awesome.
Yeah, I saw Maria's point of, but, you know, to the, the point of Doug and, and Mike Sullivan, there's a lot of other businesses in town that could say that same thing too, that, you know, we're a draw, so, I don't know, I just, I just told him that my suggestion was the planning board or the ZBA was a better choice.
Whole marijuana community up there.
Sheep, it's almost all fencing anyways, just loaded with sheep.
No, no, alpacas, so we can make some money off that stuff.
Well, you go up there, and I'll let you do the shearing.
Well, what I want to do is put a boiler back there, put a nice power plant in the back, coal-fired power plant, baby, put it right there, we got our own electricity, do our municipality, we're good.
Well, this, like I say, second that, because this lady would like to leave, and what time do you have?
Nine on the dot.
Perfect.
In favor?
Aye.